We'll call the May ninth media meeting. Glencoe Silver Lake School Board in order, please join me in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a great law for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, will you please take your call?
Jamie.
President.
Clark.
Here.
Jonathan.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Alicia.
Here.
And Donna, I'm here.
Thank you. Approve the agenda, motion, do I have a motion?
Approve.
Motion by Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by John. To approve the agenda, all in favor or not, if I say an aye. Aye. Post, I have signed. Announcements, the next school board meeting, the next regular meeting will be on Monday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at six P M. You're going to Silver Lake High School, community room four four three, four four four. Acknowledgement, that's it, that's it, that's done.
I would like to take this time, first of all, just to acknowledge, uh, May third was National Teacher Day, so we wanted to acknowledge all of our staff, all of our teachers for the great job that they've done during this year. Also, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, that school Nurses Day is on May eleventh, when I thought it was National Nurses Day on May sixth, but we learned a little bit about the difference between the two. Uh, so we want to say thank you to all of our health professionals that work at our school as well. And then finally, I want to just say thank you and acknowledge our FFA, they just recently finished, uh, state competitions, and I sent you guys the, the list of results that they have, and they were very, very successful once again, and so, uh, great job, and thank you to all the work that all of our students and staff do at the FFA.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
A quick acknowledgement of Title Nine, Title Nine is celebrating an anniversary this year, um, for its existence, and, um, Channel nine, Channel eleven, excuse me, Q eleven did a very, very nice feature on Janet Willen, and also Sue Vouch, uh, two members of our GSL staff at one time or another. And, um, just once again, really acknowledging that they were pioneers in the whole Title Nine movement, um, since its infancy, infancy. And, um, like I said, Carol Levin did a very, very nice feature on, uh, pioneers, um, in Title Nine from throughout Minnesota, and it was just really fun to see two, uh, Glencoe slash GSL members very well highlighted, and just their very, very important cards that they played in getting Title Nine established and opening up opportunities for Carol's activities and sports. So, thank you.
Channel, that was your next job. Okay, any other acknowledgements? All right, uh, public input related to the agenda? Any public input related to the agenda? Third time, public input related to the agenda. Great, Donna? Reports and presentations, Tony?
You do work from here, is that okay?
As long as you have a mic.
Yeah, I have a mic. Check, check.
Checked.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you can sing.
Oh, I was singing, okay. Well, hi, I just want to make, I'm the director of dining, uh, here at GSL, and, uh, I work, uh, as a contractor with Charwells. And I put a little flyer on their spots just to show some of the pictures of the things that we do at the school. Um, at the top left there is catering, uh, which has become a little more every day now. I get an order for brownies or, you know, uh, pinto sandwiches or sliders, and it's kind of fun, it's good, and it's part of the community, so they do it for their graduation parties, they do a bunch for Easter. It was pretty good. And then, uh, next to that, I have our, our action station, which I do a Mongolian grill up there where the kids can come up, and they can order chicken or steak, rice noodles, and a hot sauce or sweet sauce, and then, of course, they put vegetables in it if they want to. Sometimes anyway. Um, but I do that, uh, a couple, a few times a year. Um, we're gonna do a pasta bar one next year, which will be fun. Um, and then we did, we started this year a mood boost, which is really fun over in the elementary, Lincoln. And, uh, I would put together recipes for things that alter kids' moods, you know, foods, you know, the ingredients can really change a kid's mood. So, we, our dieticians designed food to make them happy, more energy, intellectual. I mean, there was, there's seven different ones that we have, little moody, so I would sit out there and hand out bling, you know, sunglasses or straws or something, and then they would taste or something. We had a quinoa one, we did strawberry salad, we did fruit, we did sun butter on, uh, salad sticks. So, they were quite happy with it. Every week now, they're like, are you gonna be out there? I'm like, oh, you know, I said, next year. But they're, they're pretty excited, so even the shop guy in the picture in that one there, she, she would come down and try it. And so, that was always good. Uh, we started a smoothie bar this year, which really brought kids in. Our breakfast, you know, it's hard when kids eat breakfast. I don't know why, they're here, it's free, and, you know, so we started a few things. Started a smoothie bar, our first day we did about ninety smoothies. All the kids thought that was just awesome. Now, we do it three days a week now, and we do about forty to fifty every day, what we're doing. And then, uh, of course, we do omelets too, that's on the bottom. Over there, we do that every Wednesday, and that's, uh, nonstop. And more kids every week coming in, and we do about fifty omelets in the half an hour that we have. We had to cut kids off at five to eight, because they would order at eight, and then, of course, they gotta go to class. So, I didn't have all these omelets, and there'd be no kids. But otherwise, they love it, they have a great time. And then I just showed, uh, it was here a week too, so I did want to, uh, say that, uh, the lunch ladies were recognized. Uh, Chris recognized them. We did, as Charwells, give them hats and treats, and, uh, just to ensure that, uh, they were taken care of, because they work hard, those ladies do. And also saying, anybody that knows Sandy Sensi, she's retiring this year after twenty-five years, so it should be kind of a lot. She's been there a long time, she's a staple. You know, and I thought she would get short time, she's, she's just gotten, no, we're gonna do it like this. I'm like, okay, that's funny, you know, which is good, you know? She's kind of training her, uh, replacement for next year for ordering food and stuff, so it's okay. Uh, then I had a team building, every year when we start school, um, I have a meeting with my staff, and I switch them up, because they haven't worked together in three months, so you gotta kind of get them back together. And, uh, and I don't let them assume that they're best buddies either, I can move them around. And then we do a project. Uh, last year, we put together carts. Uh, I've had, uh, uh, big other carts that we put together, and, uh, I had all these little games that they had to do, they had to find them, so we had a hunt in the building, so they had to go find them, then they came back here, and we put all those together. So, that was, that's something I do every year for them. Uh, I think team building is good for those folks, they really need it, because they don't work together, so they have to get along. But, uh, we have good new stuff, we have this new Masano program coming next year. Uh, so on one of the lines, it's gonna be a, a Spanish almost every day, except when we do like, uh, chicken alfredo, where we have old lines, otherwise we just have too many kids in one line. So, but yeah, you'll have, uh, pork, chicken, and beef, you'll have a choice of beans and noodles, or not noodles, but rice, and you'll have chips and, uh, flour tortillas, so they can go along, it's like a giant taco bar. But they, they get to do that three, four days a week. So, it should be a lot of fun, it should be a good program. I had to figure out the logistics of how bad, is there gonna wanna go there right away? Uh, they could go outside for a little while, I don't know, we'll see. But, uh, that would be fun. Uh, but that's all I really have to say, if you guys got any questions?
Just thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
I'll add real quick that, uh, Tony and his staff are really nice to work with. Uh, they also are part of our community schools group, uh, providing lunch for our community members that come in through the day and have, uh, lunch with us and then learn about our school, and that program has been very, very successful, and, and their support of it is, uh, a, a big reason why people keep showing up. I don't know if I have any good. So, um, that, along with, you know, just the, the flexibility that he has, the willingness to listen. Uh, he listens to kids, he listens to our staff, he listens to the administration in terms of, of trying some different things and that kind of stuff, it's been a really good partnership, so thank you, Tony and your staff.
Thank you for having me, I love coming here, we have a great time every day. Kids, Tony, Chef Tony, one year of the stall, and one, five more years, I'll do the stall. Well, that's awesome.
Well, thanks, Chef Tony.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to administrative and committee reports. This is my understanding.
Yeah, just a couple of things that I wanted to mention.
What did you guys say?
No.
You guys had a break. All right, I'm gonna be up early, cook for you guys tomorrow.
All right, a couple of things I wanted to mention, normally at the main meeting, we have our audit on agenda for approval. I just got the audit engagement letter today, and I haven't finished reading it yet, so I put that on, on the, uh, the June agenda for approval, which I know is a little late, but, um, like everybody, they went swamped, and, um, I had to call and ask for a clean. I can tell, because I always kind of go on the key page first and see how much was in process. Um, just glancing at it, I compared it to last year, um, it's probably three, four thousand dollars higher. Most of that is all related to the additional funding requirements with the S R dollars, and the new changes with the ASB eighty-seven, which is how we have to cover all the leases. Um, next year, it probably will be a little more, because there's a new gas coming, ASB ninety-six, which is soft for leases, and we also have to start tracking and reporting differently. So, um, our wonderful ASB board keeps changing those requirements, which should turn, cost us more money to have our folks audit it. So, um, I'll put that on the June, uh, for you, but that's kind of where we're at on that one. The work at the tennis court was completed last week. Uh, as you're aware, we had decided to move ahead with getting that tennis court power washed, to get that all cleaned off, and then do a little crack repair, and then touch it up on the painting, so that was completed. Uh, I checked in with Dean and, um, Mr. Schwartz and Rob DeCorsi, I said, how does it look? Dean said he doesn't know the difference between a good court and a bad court. Rob said it looked really good. Um, just a couple of the pictures I saw, and Brady went and checked out the difference in the power wash, and made a huge, huge difference, so. And they did power wash it full force, because they didn't want to, you know, take any of the surface off. So, the plan right now for the courts will be in twenty, the summer of twenty twenty-four, then they'll give you service. So, this is kind of a, a fix against by this year and next year, but this is the first time we've really had them power washed clean, so hopefully, um, people notice the difference and, and they're good to go on the tennis courts. A couple of legislative updates that I wanted to bring to you. One thing that has already been passed into law, uh, that you may have heard about, the governor signed instant law, I think it was April twenty-ninth, and it's called the Minnesota Frontline Worker Pay. This does affect schools. This does not, um, need more work for us. Um, as far as what we've read, and we've just been getting little bits of information on this yet, school employees will possibly be eligible for it, I'm not saying everybody's gonna get it, because there is some requirements that go with of it, go with it, um, there is financial, they look at your adjusted gross limit, so there's financial things that they look at. Um, how it's gonna work is employees are gonna have to go on to the website, Frontline Pay, uh, go up to apply for this, it's a separate application. So, at this point, they haven't clarified as far as school workers, if it's just teachers, as far as we know, I think it's teachers and parents. We have not gotten any information if it affects contract and services, like food service, bus drivers, custodial when you contract for them. I would hope that I will put them to be, they were frontline workers, they were here every day as well, um, helping us get through this, so we'll see where that goes, but that is information for you. But again, the money doesn't come to the schools, and we pay it, employees, it'll be the responsibility of them to apply for that if they feel they're eligible. So, that's that one. The other piece of legislation that I've been, um, kind of following now, it was, it had surfaced, then it kind of died now, and now it's back up again, and it's part of the jobs, supplemental jobs appropriation bill, and I shared this with the finance committee earlier. And what this piece of legislation that they're looking at and discussing, and it's got, um, quite a few concerns that I shared, um, with the finance committee. What they're trying to do, and I think this is a way of they're trying to help schools retain paraprofessionals. So, currently unemployment, uh, paraprofessionals that don't work in the summer, teachers don't qualify for unemployment at all, because they're paid for all year. Paraprofessionals are paid the nine months, they don't qualify for unemployment during the summer months, because they're guaranteed a job to come back, to come back in the fall. So, that's how the unemployment law is currently written, so they have never been able to collect unemployment. This piece of legislation would allow them to collect unemployment during the summer. So, they're looking at one-time funds to cover this. After that money is gone, it would be the district's responsibility to pay that unemployment for the summer. So, here's the big concern, because school districts are reimbursable on unemployment account, we turn around and levy for our unemployment costs. As you know, and it will fill the levy at truth and taxation, we have to estimate what we think our unemployment costs are gonna be for the next year, and then they look at your previous year's final, um, what they, what your cost of work for unemployment, and that's what your levy authority is. Right now, they're preliminary estimates, if schools have to start paying this, could increase your property tax levies from ten to twenty percent, based on the size of your district, based on the number of employees that would qualify for it. So, that's a huge concern that I have for school boards, is now you have to tell taxpayers, your levy's going up ten percent, fifteen percent, because we're paying people not to work in the summer. The other big concern is, if somebody's gonna get paid to stay home and not work, how are schools gonna fill their summer school positions? You know, those administrators, the principals hire and honor parents to help with all our summer school programs. So, you know, you might say, I'm, I'm not gonna work anymore, because you're getting paid me anyway. Granted, they will get the full amount, it's usually, you know, appropriated down, but that's another big concern, so. Um, some big concerns with this piece of legislation and how it's gonna come back and affect schools. So, we'll keep an eye on that, um, I don't know, I think they're meeting this week to continue to discuss that. So, it's the long-term impact on the property taxes that have, um, the business, school business officials really worried about that. You know, for some schools, have, you know, how are you ever gonna pass another levy? How are you gonna pass a late-in bond or a in-lie bond, if you're already increasing taxes to cover unemployment? And I'm not trying to belittle the, you know, paraprofessionals, you know, should they get it or not? You know, I don't wanna go in that direction, maybe, maybe not, but I'm more worried about what's gonna do with property taxes. You do have a lot of summer employment opportunities for paraprofessionals. And paraprofessionals, a lot of them, they're doing that job because they don't wanna work in the summer. They wanna be home with their kids, they, you know, they wanna, they want to do that, they have that schedule, when they're not working, when their kids are off school, and that's why they take those positions. So, you know, they know that kind of upfront, but, uh, we'll keep an eye on that one, and what happens to that. The other piece that we're still following real closely is lots of discussion on the special ed cross subsidy. You've probably heard a lot of discussions on that, because we're not hearing any discussion about increasing the formula loans at this point, so we're not looking at any funds coming to that. But they are still discussing how they can fund more of special ed. I don't think it's ever gonna be hundred percent funded, but anything they can give us, we'll take. So, right now, our current special ed, um, cross subsidy is about one point five million. Give us a hundred thousand, give us to it, thousand, help us out here, so we can, you know, staff our, our special ed rules, you know, more efficiently, get some more staff that we might need, um, and keep us out of litigation if we can't get staff. So, anything we can get on that. I know they were having a conference today, um, I wasn't able to, you know, I think it was a chance to sit in on it with some legislators, um, and I think the governor was really proud.
There was a, a rally.
Yeah. To push for it, so.
Yeah.
So, we'll kind of keep watching that, see where it goes, they don't have a lot of time left. Um, because it's not a funding year, they have to adjourn the day before, um, the session adjourns. So, they have to have everything done by May twenty-second. So, normally, you know, things are done at the, two minutes before midnight on the last day of the session, it's gotta be the day before this year, because it's not a, um, a funding, a funding year. So, we'll see, see in a couple of weeks where things end up. Um, and, you know, there's, they don't have to go into a special session to get this done. If it was the funding year where they have to get it done, you'll want to stay shut down, then we'd probably be already talking special session with them. We'll see, let's just hope for a little bit of money on that special ed that would, that would help us out. All right, questions?
Yeah, going back to the unemployment business, they don't get full, you know, they don't get their full salary, of course.
Usually about sixty-six percent.
Six percent, two thirty percent. But that two thirty percent, then the district will be required, if, if the pass bill would pass, the district would be responsible paying that, paying that to, can you get back the taxpayers?
Yes.
A hundred percent, a full hundred percent, sixty-six percent.
Except for year one.
Yeah, except for year one at this point, depending on how many dollars they actually allocate to it, maybe they would change their allocation when they refund it two years, but, you know, eventually that nine billion is gonna run out, so I don't know how much they're gonna allocate just to unemployment. Now, as a board, you can choose not to levy that for long, if your fund balance is healthy enough, and say your unemployment bill comes out a hundred thousand, say, well, let's only levy for half of that. You will still have that option as a board. I don't know how long your budget could sustain not levying for that, and you'd be pooping that money. You know, right now, I'd say, yeah, that's not gonna happen very long, we'd have to levy to repeat that, but it'd be pretty hard to face taxpayers on both that piece. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Moving on to principals' reports, Mr. Butler.
Good evening, thank you, Jason. I'll, um, I'll hit some of the highlights of the report you have in front of you. Our, uh, our after-school programs have concluded, we, we talked about that in the last few months, you can see a summary of those, there are Lincoln learners at, uh, Lincoln and Panthers after-school at Lakeside. Um, we're continuing our work with, with our grant, through the cooperative, um, you can see the goal there, um, of that, of that work, starting with some walkthroughs at Lakeside, and, um, we'll continue that work over the summer and, and into next year. Shortly, we'll be choosing our themes for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three for pro and PBIS. And, uh, I'll highlight a few things near, near the bottom. We're gonna work with our solution focus team, um, that's response to intervention, um, documentation, data, um, quality teaching, and we're, we're gonna have that team presenter in workshop week, um, in, in August. So, more to come on that as we get into the summer. You can see a summary of our several, um, summer programs down at the bottom. Summer bridges, have displaced target services, and then you see, um, a couple of additions there, we're running camp kindergarten through the building this year, historically, that has been run through the community yet, and then special education is extended school year. We'll flip, uh, flip to the back. Joy had mentioned that M C A, um, is complete, and we're in the midst of our spring benchmark window, which will go through May twentieth. There is a little bit of information on our, on our Title One grant, and you can see, um, near the bottom, halfway down the page, near the bottom of the title section, we're expecting a five percent to a ten percent reduction. Um, so we were appreciative of getting that information from staff at M D E. I'll go down to the school-community partnership and acknowledgements and finish with that. The, um, the latest for kindergarten, we have eighty-six registered, um, that takes all the verbals, the verbals out of that. So, eighty-six is a, is a solid number right now, and you can see how that has, has compared in, uh, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Um, end of the year, you can see, you can see all those events. Um, near the bottom, we've got the Lakeside Talent Show, which is always a lot of fun. Val Vanis is going to bring her bees to Lincoln, and then kindergarten and sixth grade graduation. And, um, for the acknowledgements, I, I especially want to verbally acknowledge our P T O, just so active this year in supporting staff, and their latest effort is, um, the lunch they provided last week. What, what questions do you have?
What was the indicators, you said, preliminary awards, but a five to ten percent reduction for the state and federal programs? What was the, what's the, the, the big picture reason for reduction?
So, I'll, I'll give, give it my shot, Michelle, you can correct anything. So, a couple of things, you know, um, families have, have not had to fill out, um, an application for benefits, that's one reason. Um, second reason is, you know, um, they can, and, you know, I, I guess I can't say poverty is increasing, but in, in a typical year, you know, in a year poverty is increasing, um, it might not be increasing as much as it is in different areas of state, so then that share of that pie is a little smaller. But I think primarily, right now, what we're looking at is because of the applications, is that right, Michelle?
Yep.
Because of, because of giving free licenses and now a full hospital, but not using.
So, along with the title, it has affected our condensatory, our funding, so the last four, five years, we've lost about four hundred thousand dollars in basic skills, that's three hundred. And so, that's what also affects the community, so, yeah, it was great to give families free meals, and, you know, remove the others, that's moving that one.
Thank you.
Bill, I just have one thing, uh, just gonna ask you a question about mainly behavioral. I mean, maybe it's a little bit on the academic side too, but, you know, in the beginning of the year, you know, we had two years of basically out of school, almost, um, or, uh, I guess not normal school. So, from September to now, behavior-wise, how have the younger kids, yeah, I mean, when you look at a classroom and go, a lot of problems in the first grade class at this time, and where are they at now, compared to September?
Yeah, we, we, um, we definitely saw it in the beginning of the year. Um, your kids were developing, you know, they had some needs that, um, we typically don't see. I'll give you a couple of examples, um, the number of, of students who require, and some still do require, in twillity, in kindergarten. Um, and then just, you know, as, as you got up, you know, to the upper grades, you know, um, I'll think perhaps, um, you know, seeing just things that you, you would expect maybe from, you know, younger kids seeing maybe in, in upper elementary. Um, kids have responded though, and it's been good to have, you know, a, a full, consistent year of school. It's been there.
It's very important for them to be in the building every day.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome.
Bill, I have a question on the Minnesota Reading Court. No, you've probably answered this in the past, and I just cannot recall. How many do we have with Minnesota Reading Court currently, and what, what's kind of their typical day? Who, who do they work with, and what type of activities do they do with kids?
So, right now, we don't have any. We did not have, um, a member at Lincoln, and we had a, a tutor at Lakeside for about half the year, and, uh, that, that person is no longer with Minnesota Reading Court. Um, the typical piece load is about eighteen for full-time, which would be at Lincoln, and, and half of that at, at Lakeside. And they would work with kids who are not in our response to intervention, or just a little bit, a little bit above that. So, we're relying on teachers, you know, to provide those interventions to kids who are on the bubble. So, we're hoping we've not had any applicants for next year. I know, um, M R C is recruiting heavily, and, um, it just seems things have changed since, since, um, you know, the, the side of the pandemic. Does that answer it, Hugh Clark? Thank you.
Bill, kind of as a follow-up to Jason's question and Clark's question as well, I wonder, something just kind of for the solution focus teams to maybe think about, is perhaps an opportunity for that team or those teams to do a presentation to the board, um, if that's applicable, if it's convenient, um, to just kind of answer or probe into what Jason and Clark were asking, which is kind of, we as a board have made some decisions with regard to messer money and, and some positions that we added, such as the, the student support specialist or the socially-emotional learning, uh, components at the elementary. Um, and it's not for those positions or individuals to come and, you know, plead their case or, or say, you know, why they're important, because we know that they are, that's why we added them. But really, it's just for those teams to perhaps come and explain what they've been able to do because of us adding those positions. Um, you know, how are the need, what are the needs, how are they being met? How were they met before the pandemic? Um, just how things have changed because we're in this new norm. Um, that might be beneficial to the board to hear that, and might address more of what Jason and Clark were just asking, if you would, huh?
Yeah, I think that you would all find that of interest, and they'll be working on, on their presentation for workshop week, and perhaps after that, they can, they can tailor that to a, to a school board. they can, they can tailor that to a, to a school meeting.
I mean, once, you can talk to them about if it's applicable and stuff. You know, if, if they're willing to do that, that would be actually beneficial.
Yeah, I think it would be, if you find that interesting. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Principal Boss.
Good evening. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about some of the bigger things that are happening at my level, and then I'll bring it up for any specific questions you may have. I know we've talked about summer school, what that looks like at both levels. Junior high, which is going to be known as junior summer retreat, is going to be in two sessions, June 13th through June 24th, and then June 11th through July 22nd, sorry. Currently, we have eight students enrolled. I would really like to get to about fifteen to twenty, is where I'm, I'm hoping that we get that program. Whitney Peters is running our, our junior high summer retreat program right now. We're pretty confident that we can get to that fifteen to twenty. Phone calls have been going out, just in the last week, we gained all four students. To kind of give you guys some perspective from last year, we had three students that attended this last year. So we're already well above that, and we need to get more students in. And a large part of that is based on some of the questions that I, I think Clark may have asked about behaviors. We have seen a lot more behaviors this school year than we have since I've been here, and I attribute that, I mean, to coming back from, from kind of a boot up year and a half. But as the year has gone on, and as more structure has been there, students are kind of getting back into what those expectations of school would be. So we're really kind of taking a targeted approach to get some of these students in the building, and, and to help them through a few weeks of summer, maintain those levels of expectations so that next fall, it's a smooth transition for them. Same thing at senior high level, there's a little bit different. Theirs has more to do with credits towards graduation. The name of that program is accelerated to graduate. Currently, we have about twenty-one students enrolled, which is higher than we usually have at this time. Even though we send letters out, we make contacts out, the vast majority of our, our students who enroll in our credit recovery program, those individuals reach out to me about the first week in June. So I would expect our number for that program to be about fifty. And that's above where we are on a yearly basis during the summer. Of those fifty, not all fifty get credit. It depends on what they finish with their, their program here at school. So I would say right now, for our two summer school programs, we're, we're right above where I'd want to be, or even above where I would like to be for the beginning of May. Graduation for our seniors is going to be June 3rd at seven o'clock in the Black Gym. It'll be a traditional ceremony again this year, and graduates will be arriving in school at six-twenty. Make sure they have their cords on, their gowns on, make sure they're lined up correctly to come into the Black Gym. Staff will be walking with them again this school year. So any staff that are interested in doing that can reach out to myself, or Paul Lemke, who's our senior class advisor, or Mr. Sanju. But right now, I've been putting together our list of staff that will walk with our graduates, which I think is really special, when you can see staff members from the elementary level all the way through the senior high level, who have worked with these kids over the last twelve years, walk with them on that day. MCA testing at the junior high, senior high level, finished up with our full testing sessions last Friday. The only thing we have left now is a handful of students who were absent on the days of the test, and all of those will be completed this week. Staffing, and I should have put staffing needs is what I should have put on here, but these are the current openings that we have for next school week. And these are, these are concerns that I have, and I know they're concerns that many areas of the industry has. At my level, we have a senior high science position open, we have business open, we have special education openings, and that includes our ESY programming that starts in June. As of today, we have an ESL posting that will go out tomorrow. Senior high English, we're going to have a need for, and we constantly have a need for parent professionals. This has been a really difficult year for staffing, and, and I know, as I sit here and I talk to the board, this does not come as a surprise to you guys. This is not specific to GSL, this is something across the state and probably across the nation with staffing shortages, but this is a concern, and this is something that we're going to have to get a little creative with as far as tier one licensing and, and getting some, some individuals in the programming, potentially working on some overloads to cover needs if we can find certified staff to come in. Right now, I don't have answers for you, but I just want to make you aware that this is something that we are looking at and working on for solutions in the fall. On a much lesser concern than that, student staff handbooks, as always, will be kind of reviewed by my leadership teams here, and will be presented to you guys at the board in June for approval. Those are printed in our junior high planners. So that's why we usually have to try to get them approved in June, so we can get those off to the planning company to get them into print. And then acknowledgements, one of them, Mr. Sanju talked about at the beginning, is our FFA program, and the wonderful things that they've done here in the, well, over the last several years, but over the last weeks, and the accolades that they've had. Rebecca Paskowitz and Kevin Lamont are advisors for that program, and they have done a phenomenal job in the two years that they've been here at GSL. But the other thing I'd like to draw attention to is acknowledging Mike Hardy and Carol Silas, who they've worked with our Unified Club here at GSL. This is the first year that GSL's had a Unified Club. They've done many events throughout the year. They did bowling, they went tubing, they had an art exhibit that they went to at Hutchinson. Upcoming activities they had, they have our Special Olympic track and field on May 19 in Hutchinson. They orchestrated a silly sock day to down some of awareness. And then they have also started unified board games during Panther Power Round. They noticed that some of our, our students with disabilities weren't able to interact with our mainstream students during that time, and they've worked to come in here to play board games and be more inclusive with our students with disabilities. So just want to acknowledge Mike and Carol for the commitment as well. What specific questions can I answer for you as a board?
Okay, here you go. Thank you, Mr. Boss.
Thank you.
Superintendent, superboard.
Thank you, and good evening to everybody. I'll, I'll try to be brief. Most of the stuff that I had moved out on my report, several of the, the next one before me, kind of talked about it, so I won't, I won't repeat all of that. But we continue to deal with COVID cases, they're very small numbers. This last week, we actually had six cases, which is one of the highest weeks that we've had in, in months. We continue to put that number on our dashboard, we'll do that until the end of the school year, and then we'll be done with that, that, that reporting. Early childhood, we continue to take registrations, we're basically finalizing the schedule, and then we'll be reaching out to those families and working with them. The, our director comes back tomorrow, and so we'll be meeting and getting all those things finalized in the early childhood department. And the numbers look very similar to what they had last year, and we'll hopefully get all that stuff taken care of here in the next few days. I know that SiteLogic, we talked about our facility analysis, they're, they're still finalizing their data, and we'll be connecting with them over here in the next few weeks here, and then we'll be giving you guys that information here in the next couple of months, once they get it all put together with, with that. So that's happening. Also, Southwest West Central is finalizing their ALC that they're going to be putting in Glencoe, which is going to be a, a benefit here to our students, just because of vocation. And I know that, you know, there are several kids that are going over to Oconia. Most of our students that are over there right now are in the senior, so they're going to be hopefully finishing up and graduating and doing those things. And then the few kids that are underclassmen will be connecting with them and working on that transition to see if they can come here. The real benefit of having the ALC here in, in Glencoe is the fact that if students need that, that alternative education program, we're close enough to be able to do some sharing, which I think is going to be a really good benefit for those students. Instead of having, basically, you're there 100% of the time, there might be students that be able to go over there for one or two classes and then be able to stay at GSL for a, for a class here or there, so. Coming up, we have community schools coming up, our last one on the 19th of May. We also have our celebration day program coming up on the 27th, and during that celebration day, we're going to, we're going to show that video, or going to attempt to show that video of Mrs. Vouch with the Carol Lovett. She's retiring this year, so it's kind of a, a, a good thing to be able to, so when we, when we recognize her, might be a good segue to be able to, to show that video. And then staff, we obviously, graduation was not coming, but we also have our staff recognition day here on June 2nd, and we'll be recognizing staff that have put in their years of service to GSL. That's what I have.
Any questions for Superintendent Sanju? Are there any committee reports? No? All right. We'll move on, move through the consent agenda, action item, proposal number one. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. To approve the consent agenda, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all in same sign. Motion carries. All business done at this time. New business, item A, art and music curriculum expenditure proposal, action item. To approve the art musical curriculum expenditure proposal, I should send it to the board at the April board meeting. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving the art music proposal. Do I have a motion?
So?
Motion by Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Janie. To approve the art musical curriculum expenditure proposal, do we have any questions?
This is not all, sorry, this is not all. I've been working on that period here for thirteen years.
All right, here you go. Do I have our, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all in same sign. Motion carries. Item B, summer school plans, action item. Administration has been making plans for the district summer school program. The summer school plan includes the following programs. Elementary summer bridge, K through six, June 20th through July 28th. Micro summer school, June 20th through July 28th. Kickstart grades, K through two, August 15th through August 25th. Elementary extended school year, to be determined. ESSD, extended school year, August 22nd through August 26th. Junior, senior high extended school year, and then the dates between June 20th and August 11th. Junior high's summer retreat, June 13th through June 24th, and July 11th through the 22nd. Senior high accelerated graduation program, July 13th through, eight, oh, July 13th through July 1?
June 13th.
June 13th?
Yes.
Okay. June 13th through July 1st, and July 11th through July 29th. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the summer school programs, and please add them. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do I have a second? I'll second that. Any questions or comments?
And, and just so you know, we, we put these on as part of the audit purposes, so that when we go through the hiring process, and they go through audit, then they show that this has been approved from, for the board in terms of, of hiring those people. So that's kind of why these dates are in the, in the board.
And most of all, these are funded with some of the federal buckets of money we got, so it's not, these aren't SRR, they're art funds, so it's FIN 150 and FIN 163, is where these funds are coming from. So your extended school year, of course, we keep that in special ed, so that's part of special ed funding. The only one that we can't use the federal funds for is incoming kindergarteners, because they weren't in school before, we can't show lost instructional time for kids that work here. So we can't fund that with those programs, but we're going to, we're going to fund that program anyway to get some of those kids in here. But the rest of those will all be using federal fund dollars, which have to be used this year, they can't carry over into next year. So we used a little bit of those funds last year with some things that we did, and now that's why you see the extensive list, issuing tracking as many services as we can to as big kids.
Okay. All right. I have a motion by Alicia, and second by Jason, to approve summer school plan. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All in same sign. Motion carries. Item C, approve activities director AD contract. School board negotiators, Director Lindemann, and Lemke, and Superintendent Sanju recommend approving Dean Schwartz's activities director contract, July 1, 22 through June 30 of 2024. Do I have a motion?
So?
Motion by John?
I'll second.
Second by Clark. To approve the activities director AD contract, just to note, that total package was 6.08% for Peter contract. Any questions? Here you go. I got a motion by John, second by Clark, to approve the AD director contract. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All in same sign. Motion carries. Item D, formal evaluation of Superintendent Sanju, information only. The school board will be conducting a formal evaluation of Superintendent Sanju, as an evaluation report will be made by the personnel committee, Director Bonver, and Director Lemke, at the July 11th board meeting. No school board action is necessary, and we, we got our evaluation sheets all handled up, so, thank you. Item E, resolution to accept donations. It's a recommendation of Superintendent Sanju to adopt a resolution to accept donations. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do I have a second? I'll second that. To accept the donations, again, a nice snapshot of our communities again. Any other comments? I have a motion by Jason, and second by, motion by Alicia, and second by Jason, to adopt a resolution to accept donations. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All in same sign. Motion carries. Item M, miscellaneous, there's none at this time. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So?
Motion by Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Alicia. To adjourn at 6:49 PM. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.